Each meeting of the Amherst Board of Education is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. The time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Barb, roll call please.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Here.
Mr. Sappa?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mr. Camnicar?
Here. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've already made all calls, we'll move on. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the agenda and any all denims there too.
No move.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Camnicar?
Aye.
Mr. Sappa?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Good news reports. Yes, I'd like to start with Casey Wolfar, athletic director.
Thank you, appreciate you guys having me. I know there's a lot of people here today, so I'll be brief. We have had a great winter sports season. We have a lot of things to be proud of here at Steel and in the Amherst community. Real quickly, wrestling, or we had a total of three total state qualifiers, I shouldn't say that, we had six total state qualifiers. One in wrestling, one individual in swimming, and then a relay in swimming. Matt Lee finished fifth in the state at 285 pounds in wrestling. He went four and two at state. He had, three of his four wins were pins, and he tied his state record with an 11-second pin, so it's a great accomplishment. Nathan Moore qualified in the 100 and 200 free for state, and then he was also part of a relay with Max Malinchek, Sam Parker, and Jake Kiska to go to state, so really a nice season for those young men. Boys swim team won the conference meet, they won undefeated in the regular season, 7-0, and then won the conference meet by 90 points. They set the tone early that day. In the first relay, they scored three relays in the top eight. There are only eight swim teams in the conference. We had three relays finish in the top eight, which means that we finished, we had two relays finish ahead of two other schools, top relays, so really a nice accomplishment for that group. We got some really neat milestones achieved this winter. Two wrestlers reached their 100th career win. Alex Reyes, who's a senior, won his 100th match in early January, and then Matt Lee, as a junior, won his 100th match in February just before the conference meet. Cindy Rule scored her 1,000th point. Anybody who was there that night against North Olmsted, it was a really awesome environment. I'd like to thank the community for showing up and supporting Cindy that night. Everybody hung on every shot she took, she only needed a couple of points that night to get to 1,000, but it was really kind of a neat night, and it was really nice for our younger girls that are playing travel and community ball to be there to see her do that. So, thank you to the community and those travel teams for showing up and supporting them. Hockey returned this winter, I'd like to thank the board for supporting that return. Had a really nice season for a group of 10 young men. We lose two seniors. I do not believe we have any juniors this year, so everybody else, the remaining eight kids are sophomores or below. We have another four to five kids that are in eighth grade that'll be on the team. The team had an 11 and 17 record. We played in the white division, there's three divisions in the Greater Cleveland League, and we finished fourth in our part of the division. We were 11 and 17. Coach Morris was voted co-coach of the year in the white division because, like I said, we had a tremendous season and only our first year back competing at that level. Like I mentioned, Coach Morris was the coach of the year. Kevin Collins was the girls' basketball coach of the year in Lorain County, and Mary Bartek was the boys' coach of the year in the Southwestern Conference. Lastly, and real quickly, we did start our Hall of Fame, we had our first Hall of Fame banquet on February 11th. I'd like to thank everybody's support of that. We had about 200 people here that night. It was a great mix of seven inductees and a team, as well as, we had our present athletes that were invited as well, all of which reached the state level last year, so it was a really nice mix of the past and the present coming together to celebrate some great accomplishments in Amherst schools' current and past history. So, again, thanks everybody for having me, and good luck in the rest of the meeting.
Any questions for Casey? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Coleman.
Okay, thank you. My good news report is a simple one today, but it's one that I'm happy to talk about. During this process of finding the new principal of junior high, and I want you to all know that it is extremely, extremely important to me that we find a top-notch, good-quality person, and I say that because I've got three babies that are gonna be going through that school, so I mean, I want the best person out there that we can find. And the interview process was kind of interesting in that, as Steve said, Steve said usually what happens is, is one person will just kind of rise to the top as you go through the process. We went three rounds, and Mr. Gibson was definitely one of the top candidates, if not the top candidate after that first round, but then when he got to the second and the third round, he definitely, you know, set himself above all the others by a good amount. I mean, he was rock solid. And I feel very, very lucky that the junior high can continue doing some of the great things that they're doing, that he'll be taking over. I feel like Mr. Gibson absolutely can take him to the next step. He's very sharp, he's very witty, he's fun, he's got a good sense of humor, and he's crazy enough to bring four kids to a board meeting. That's gotta be pretty good. Four adorable kids to a board meeting. So, my good news report is simply, I want to introduce the new guy in town, and that's Mr. Gibson. So, Mr. Gibson, come on up and say hi. Can you bring a classroom with you?
Hi, just wanted to thank everybody. I can't tell you how welcoming the Amherst community has been to me since I found out. It's been incredible. I want to thank Steve and Mike through the process of the interviews, and obviously Ryan and Rhonda, and the staff at AJH. Everybody has been really awesome, and I'm humbled to be selected to join the team here, and really excited to get started this summer, and, you know, keep doing amazing things with the different people that we have at AJH, and the great students to continue to serve the community. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
I could just add one thing. I'm Ron Tienhoff, and I'm the assistant principal at Amherst Junior High, so I'm here excited to start this journey with Mr. Gibson, and on behalf of the junior high staff, we don't have a present for you, this is kind of how it's gonna be. For your kids and/or Mrs. Gibson. So, welcome to our junior high family, and here's some, I was gonna say their first Amherst Comet apparel, but you made me to it, so this is for you, and this one's for you, and then, for you guys. So, welcome to our family, you're gonna love it.
Thank you. Thank you everyone.
Mr. Yakubozie, my good, please, just a moment. In addition to congratulating Andrew on his new appointment as junior high principal, I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank our staff members who were involved in the selection process. As Andrew would tell you, it was a very comprehensive process. We had multiple administrators involved, we had teachers, we had support staff, secretaries, custodians. It was a very, very thorough process, and I am absolutely convinced that we got it right, and the reason we got it right is because it was a collaborative effort. So, again, congratulations, Andrew, it's great to have you here in Amherst, and also thank you to all of our staff members who participated in the process.
No pressure, Andrew. Thank you. I'm not sure I want to call this guy, that's having seen what I'm seeing. Bill?
Thanks. All right, as everybody knows, technology, even, technology has an ever-increasing role in our daily lives, just like the pledge we were just doing, we were pledging allegiance to a electronic or video flag, however you wanted to say it. We're doing the same thing in the classroom. Not only are we going over the, you know, the reading and the writing and the math, but we're trying to integrate technology into the classroom as much as we can, whether it's with laptops, iPads, or cell phones, whatever it is. We're just getting it in there more and more frequently, and it's because we're keeping up with the trend, and hopefully getting ahead of the trend, to be honest with you. So, what I'm gonna show you today is, I got a group of kids, and there are a couple of teachers here, both math teachers, they're all in their game uniforms over here for the coding and the 24 STEAM program, I don't know if you guys know a lot, if you guys know about the STEAM 24 competition? All right, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna let Amy explain this in a minute, but what we're gonna do is, I have to ask you guys to get up and move over this way to oversee this in a second. So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go watch a little presentation, let's walk over here. We purchased a set of Spiros last year, we purchased them for, Mrs. Jackson got onto this craze of coding slash, coding's sort of like on the verge of engineering, and the Spiros, we bought her a set last year and had the kids just go nuts with it, so it was kind of fun to watch them just play around. And this year, we didn't have quite as much money to buy another set, because I wanted to make sure Mrs. Beetler had a set as well, but Mrs. Beetler was able to go out, you talked to a couple of different, she hit the street trying to find donations and all kinds of different things to try to get a set of Spiros, which she did. She found a few people that were able to help us out.
Yeah, I got money from PPG, I wrote a grant to PPG.
And there were, there were even parents, a couple of different companies.
Yeah, there were students whose parents worked for companies that would donate, like, I think we got $200 from a student's parent's company, so.
Right, something like that. It's approximately somewhere between $1,000 and $1,200, or $1,200 for a set of 12 of these. So, what we're gonna do here is, we're just gonna sit there, or the girl, the kids are gonna, I think they're gonna explain, they're gonna explain, this was the STEAM part of the 24 STEAM competition that they had at LCC, what, a month ago maybe?
March 2nd.
March 2nd, so it's kind of neat. I'm gonna sit back, let them explain, actually, Mrs. Jackson can start it out first, because I think she's gonna set the stage for it.
Yeah, we were given these rugs that were without tape, and one of the things we had to do is, the kids had to actually do a lot of the measuring prior to, we were given specifics on what it looked like, and it's supposed to be like a golf course, we will. So, each hole here is a point, and so all that was designed by the ESC, and then we had to replicate it on our own carpets, which is challenging, because a lot of measuring and all that, and all the labeling that you see, the red lines are lines that you can't cross, every hole that you can get in is a point. The kids are given at the competition one minute. All the coding happens prior to the competition, so that's the months of work in the classroom after school that we held with these kids, and they had to, they had to write the code to get through all these holes. At the competition, they literally hit start or run program, and they had to just let it go, and then there were judges to see if their code was written accurately, and if they, how many points they got, and we got judged based on our points for our team. And we took an average. So, the fifth grade ended up winning a trophy this year, and they beat the other schools that were at the competition, so that was awesome. A lot of the teams had some trouble, different environments of Spiro make a big difference. If you have carpet on carpet, carpet on hard tile, so sometimes the code would work perfectly, in fact, this is what happened to us, we had nine holes perfectly within a minute, and we get to the competition, what was our most?
We got like, I got four.
Four. And it was a little defeating, but they worked so hard, and those three are my sixth grade rock stars on Spiro, that's why I brought them, that's Mackenzie Aurora and Grant, and I thought they did a fabulous job, so I wanted them to show, but I think we're gonna have the fifth grade kind of show how their coding went, and you can see, the idea is they had to go in the hole, and they had to touch this line with their Spiro, so go in, touch, and go out, and that counts as a point, and you'll notice they're not driving it. Spiro can also be driven just by, just like a regular.
Like a remote control?
Yeah, like a joystick or something, driving. Everything that they're doing is actually coded prior to the event, so if you guys wanna.
They had to do a few adjustments when we got here because of the difference in the carpet.
Yeah.
And this is Corinne, Gianna, and Jillian, and they were my rock stars, I got from Donuts to whoever got the most hole. I was so desperate. We were.
Teachers are a little intense.
All right, hit run, see what we got. So, that would be a point, because it hit the line and it went back out. At the competition, that last one probably wouldn't, unless you guys are going, are you going for this one? Okay, that's two points. Red tape you can't touch. There's a lot of particulars to this that made it very challenging.
Sometimes it does what it wants to do. When it gets to a point, doesn't it, girls? Yeah, because it was running smoothly before, but there's a lot of factors that go into this, like if there was something under the rug, or the rug isn't perfectly flat, or something like that, so at the competition, we weren't allowed to make any adjustments. When we got here, these guys were able to make a few adjustments, but again, I really, I'm proud of these guys, we worked really hard on it, we were in the morning, we were here in the morning, early, after school, late, but honestly, we were kind of lucky that ours ran smoothly when we got there, weren't we?
Well, one of your groups, the phone just died, they brought their, their devices were their phones, or their iPods.
And his phone was burning up, like it totally died, and we were like, that's the only device we have to run that, so we were really fortunate.
Yeah, but this is cool, because this event has turned into, it's the 24 game, which is a card game that we play with numbers making 24, and it's about speed, but the second half of this has always been more like math trivia, or math questions like OAA questions or air questions, and that kind of got old, and it really wasn't.
They stopped making questions that were relevant to our objectives at every level.
Yeah, and it just seemed like this needed to go further, and so last year, they hinted that they were interested in doing some sort of a competition with the Spiro, and I actually had one of these at my house, so I'm like, oh, okay, so we played around with it, and then we got the full class set, and we had so much fun coding, I mean, the kids are writing, we learned all about coding and what that means, and, I mean, this is an example of the code that these kids wrote, I mean, from the degree to how long it runs, to the turns, I mean, it's all about the angles, and we had a measuring, do you guys have that measuring?
Yeah, the little circular thing right there, but they didn't bring our blue thing.
Yeah, we just, I mean, it was just tons.
You have to, like, you have to find the tail, show them where the tail is on it. The tail has to line up perfectly in order to start the code, and then every time that the Spiro would stop, they would have to find the tail again to put that tool on it to see how many degrees they would need to have the Spiro move. It really took a lot of time.
It's opening up a good discussion with the kids about where you can go with this with careers and programming and coding, and I take my sixth graders to Highland Software in Westlake, and just seeing careers in coding, and it's just been really neat, so.
So, wherever that thing goes is pre?
Determined.
Pre-coded. They sound this, yeah, what they, what they, this is snap code, lots of different ways to write code.
Because they actually use it, and they use it all the time. I can go over and like, help them with the measuring tool, and I can give suggestions, but.
This, and I've done this for two years, this is, I don't teach this, I give it to them, and I say, figure it out, right? Right, I mean, it literally, and then we'll problem solve. It'll be like, okay, that didn't work, what else could we try? I did not go through all the controls on these apps and tell them, I showed you a few, like this will be this.
Show us how to move it.
Yep, and then after that, it was so much more beneficial for them to just go and do, and they, and so I probably would agree. By the end, you guys probably knew a lot more about this than I did, and it was, that's cool.
It is.
Anything you guys want to say, kids?
It was kind of frustrating, because we kept moving it around. First, we went to the gymnasium, and then we went to the cafeteria, and then the hallway, and the classroom.
Finding us about the practice.
And it was complete, it was hard, because every time we moved it, like, it'd be the end of the time after school, and like, say, the cafeteria, and then we went to practice it, because we're done with our homework and stuff, and math class, we went to go practice on it, and the whole thing was messed up, and they'd just be like.
Because it was a different surface underneath.
Yeah.
But that's where engineers do it with every day.
These are feature engineers right here.
When we were with making it, and it was perfect when we first started, but, and so you start at the same time that the minute starts, and when someone had a false start, everyone had to stop, and ours was fine, and then we had to restart, and ended up not working as well.
It was new for the ESC to have this competition too, so they allowed us to give them a lot of suggestions, and one of the things we said was, maybe that there should be a timer at each rug, so that not everybody has to start over when there's a false start, because some people, it's an advantage to them to be able to restart, but you guys were going perfectly, and it was a disadvantage, because the next time that you did it, it didn't work the same.
And that's the code when the Spiro isn't charged, because it can go slower, and it all just affect it, and it won't work.
For one hour of use, the Spiro must charge for three hours.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, so you can't really do it with every class unless you have a lot of Spiros. So, that's why we have so many Spiros, so we can do it with more kids.
And Spiros are ending up on Christmas lists at people's houses.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, that was quite the thing at Christmas.
Yeah, I was getting a lot of emails.
It's also pretty annoying, other schools just kept coming over to our rug, and.
Oh, at the competition.
Because they weren't, they didn't have enough code, and there's two things, is that, one, if they didn't have as many Spiros as us, and two, they had maybe two teams, and they were both, their teams were really good, their average would be higher, and it'd be easier for them to score higher. It's a little bit annoying, and also, they kept coming over to our rug, and maybe it missed a little bit, but, ooh.
It's pretty intense, we want to win when we go, so, you gotta understand.
And remember, if you ever, if you do see the new Star Wars, well, it's not new anymore, but the most recent Star Wars movie, the new droid, the BB-8, is based off of the Spiro technology, it's really, so if you ever watch it and see it, you'll know what we're talking about now.
Treasure Report, Barb?
Yes, I have a couple things on my items tonight, and sorry to say that I have no financial reports again this month, but we should have all the months next month, the conversion, and not just our district, but all the districts that went live, had some conversion issues, conversion from the old legacy system, bringing over the data into close and balance, it has to be accurate, so Connect and MICE are working together, Tyler, Eunice is working together to clean those up, and we're almost there, so we should have everything this next month. But I do have on the board agenda, of course, the February 27th board meeting minutes to approve, and I do not have any revisions or appropriation of Board 12 certificate at this point. I have an updated forecast, Steve and I have worked on the forecast, and factored in the consolidation savings that we anticipated, projected with the passage of the bond, and of course, we're projecting strong financial outlook through the, at least 2021. The thing with the five-year forecast that we have to be most conscious about, this is contingent on passage of the renewal levies that we have on in May. If this levy doesn't pass, we will go backwards. Even though we have the savings projected in, and we've had some nice savings this year, as we have spoke or shared with the board, the health insurance consortium that we moved to a couple of years ago, we are, when the board voted on a 2% increase for next year, and just a few years back, we were having 20% increases, so we're really excited about that. This will be two years that we've had, we've had a break in between, but this will be two years that we've had 2% increases, which saves the district quite a bit of money, as not only that, but the other thing that we have been, in form government, we're real excited about, and will pass to the staff, actually tomorrow morning, I was kind of waiting, we have a, they call it a premium holiday, so we will go one month without premiums, the employee share and board share, so that is a savings to the district, we're real excited about that. That will take place in May of this month. Some of the other things that we factored in, into the forecast, that was exciting to be able to share, we had a $38,000 rebate, or refund, from our gas, we do our gas purchasing through a consortium, and of course, they did, like I did, we heard all along that winter is going to be snowier and colder, so you forecast appropriately, and then you make the adjustments. So, we had some adjustments in the purchase services for the milder winter, and that will show on the forecast. And, other than that, the forecast, like I said, that we have a, we have a great financial outlook and go through 2021, but this is all contingent, and we can't stress it enough on the passage of the renewal levy in May. I also have under the financial reports, I have the second half of the resolution that the board approved last month, or the storm and sanitary easement, this is just, the resolution is stating basically to approve, to assign the agreement in hold, as we have done before, and I think Mr. Yakubozie shared with the board the conversation he maybe had with, I don't know if he spoke with Air or Pal whatsoever.
Yes, I did.
And I understand the board is okay with that, so we'll put it on the agenda tonight for the passage of that, and it'll help them out as far as maintaining the sanitary lines that run outside of the stormwater, I'm understanding, the stormwater retaining portion, so it's not part of, but it's the lines that run on both sides of that.
Basically, what happened there is, the last board meeting, we approved the easement to create a stormwater maintenance or stormwater management plan with the child term by communication in the city of Amherst by having a retention pond, a retention area created shoot. What they also realized, and going over some of their books over the years, there's an old sanitary line that goes at the south end of properties that are running the north end of the shoot property, if you can visualize that, and there is a storm sewer down there that the city of Amherst never had, and easement to go on that property for maintenance purposes. So, the city said, we'd like to get easement memorialized by recording it for record, that's what the second component is, it's a sanitary sewer, which has nothing to do with term by communication of the stormwater. They're separate items, no doubt.
And they included it in the same agreement, so it kind of threw the board off last month.
Right.
So, it just took us an additional time, it was given to us kind of late timeframe last month, so this will put some closure to this easement.
These easements are, they're very common, they're, everybody that owns a piece of property has an easement coming right in front of their yard, the gas, water, whatever, electric, they're all there, so it's nothing like usual.
And of course, the good part of my treasures report, that I always like to share, is the donations. We're always thankful as a district to receive donations, and we received $500, it was from NASA, Glenn Research Center, to Still Bots, and it is to support their participation in the 2017 First Buckeye Regional Robotics Competition. We also received $1,000 from Mr. and Mrs. Scott.
Log.
The Log, to go to Marion Elsstill to help support the Girls Cross Country Program. So, I would ask the board to approve 8A through 8F.
Is there a motion? Second, bottom of discussion, the five-year forecast is pretty well good to go now for the bond presentation.
Yes, and that will be submitted tomorrow after the board approves it, and that will help going forward with the bond presentation as well. We already had an excellent five-year forecast, through the interviews with the underwriter, they graded it, and it's already an excellent five-year forecast, but it doesn't hurt, we had some savings, and we definitely wanted to see the bond rating company to see those. They wanted to make sure they were aware of the different things that have taken place with the passage of the bond.
Again, I want to thank Barb and Steve for the work they put on that five-year forecast, that is not an easy task to do, it takes a lot of time, and a lot of smarts trying to figure out, you know, we're looking into the future, it's a five-year forecast, it's always being revised, but it's based on information we know today, so that could change next month, and it will be updated again in May, if I'm not mistaken, but the five-year forecast looks very good, as long as we can pass that renewal levy, and as long as the state doesn't do anything stupid.
Well, and that's another thing, the state, just, we always, as administrators in the district, realize that the state always comes out with a proposed budget, but it goes through many, many changes from the time they first propose it till they clean it up, and if they stick with what they have, Amherst schools will lose $500,000. So, when you look at that for the length of the forecast, that's harmful, and we hopeful, it'll change like most of the time it does, and that will not be the outcome, but, and I can't go back to enough that it's imperative we pass that renewal levy, because everything plays a part in our financial health.
Just to kind of reinforce what Barb is saying, you know, the impact of this renewal levy, as the board is well aware, over the last several years, we've been able to balance our budget, you know, meaning our expenses have come in below our revenue, actually dating back to, I want to say, 2011, 2012, but if we were to loom.
uh, actually dating back to, I want to say 2011, 2012, but if we were to lose the revenue from this renewal levy beginning in 2018, our expenses would exceed our revenue, which as you know, is the beginning of a problem. Uh, but the flip side of that, and this is the really good news, is that if we are able to renew this levy, of course, it's not a tax increase, we're asking folks to continue to give us what they've been giving us since 2012. If we're able to do this and we can avoid state funding cuts, we are in a position to be financially stable through, and I, we use the word at least 2021 because our forecast only runs through 2041, or 2021, I'm sorry, uh, but we believe perhaps even further than that. Uh, so we really have an opportunity here, you know, with, with this renewal levy to really, as we've talked before, this is kind of the last piece, uh, to putting together a long-term, uh, plan that really puts us in a good position as far as our facilities, our educational programming, as well as, uh, you know, making sure our financial house is in order. So if we're able to secure this, uh, we, we, we should be in a good position moving forward.
And just as a point of clarity, we're in the process now for reevaluation of the county. They're reevaluating all the property in Marin County. So if someone experiences an increase in real estate taxes, not because of the schools, we're not doing anything to increase your taxes right now.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if, they're probably going to come out with some higher valuations.
I would think we stay stable.
But because we're passing, but because we passed levies, you know, we passed dollar amounts, not, in other words, a levy is only allowed to bring in so many dollars. So if you get a higher profit allocation, doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes as they relate to real estate taxes or, or as they relate to school taxes are going to go up because they adjust the effective millage to keep this, the dollar amount at the same dollar amount.
I think that misconception a lot of times is that, and I'll just say, Mr. Taxpayer, because when there's a, uh, reappraisal in the county, uh, you, you hear countywide what the percentage change is, whether it's up or down, and it goes by different categories. For example, if the, if, say, there was an increase of 7% in our valuation, it depends where you fall in that 7%. If you're a Mr. Taxpayer that falls underneath what your individual properly, you will get increases. If you are a Mr. Taxpayer that is above, you might get a decrease. So when you say to your neighbor or someone you know across town, my taxes, well, mine went down, then why did mine go up? But there's a lot of things that play a part in that when you hear 7% countywide, and yes, uh, the continuing levies, they kind of operate the same way because of House Bill 920, it has that phantom revenue, and when, uh, it goes, the valuation increases, then you're expected to collect more locally and then you get less from the state and not only that, because then, then the dollar amount that you've collected on a regular operating levy, which is called, uh, current tax levy, it's not an emergency set by dollar, it goes off of what you've collected in the past at that millage and it's adjusted up and down the same way. That's House Bill 920. And, you know, if you have an emergency levy on the ballot, it's collected by a dollar amount. So if they need four, $4 million, they're going to collect $4 million and if the valuation goes up, millage goes down because they collect, that doesn't take them as much to get that dollar amount.
And the point I was making is that the taxes do go up, it seems like a school with the first thing people take a shot at. And the fact of that is, you know, that's not the case here. What we're doing is not increasing taxes, maybe due to valuation, whatever, but it's not because of the recent passage of the bond issue, it's not because of the renewal of the existing levy. So if someone's, if someone does experience an increase in their taxes, it's not something that we did as a district.
No, and the renewal is just that, you pay any more taxes, it's because of reappraisal, not because of...
Interestingly enough, a reappraisal, depending on when it's completed, can actually benefit us in bond rating presentation in Chicago. Because if you increase valuation, then you're, that, that gives them, the guys who are rating you, they can give you perhaps a better bond rating and for every quarter percent we can save, it's about a $700,000 savings over 25 years, which is a lot of money. So that's why we're going to Chicago next month to get that bond rating, hopefully one more notch from where it is right now.
We have one opportunity to save that, those dollars, we're absolutely going to take a shot at it.
Yeah, if I could add too, and actually I was going to do this as part of my report, but it, it certainly ties into this discussion, we just actually received the updated, you know, property taxes from the Marin County auditor. And again, this year, if you look at the 14, 14 districts in Marin County, Amherst once again has the third lowest property taxes, um, of any district in the county. And if you look at the $100,000 market value and look at, and look at the property taxes of all 14 districts in, in Marin County, we are again the third lowest, and that is one of the things that we have always credited ourselves on, is delivering a high-quality educational product at a very low cost to the taxpayer. And again, with a renewal levy, you know, we, we, we don't, we don't see this moving that much. We, the goal is, as I said, to ensure we stay in that lower tier of, of property taxes in Marin County while delivering those, those high-quality programs. So, uh, again, that's very current, it's, uh, up to date as of January 2017, but again, good news, third lowest property taxes in Marin County.
And then, just to kind of, people sometimes think, when you say who's the highest in the county, automatically they think Avon, Avon Lake, Duke. Who do you think's the highest in the county? You know who it is.
Yeah, Cheffey Lake.
Highest in the county, which is, I thought it's pretty surprising, but it is. Pardon?
They have too many apartments.
Too many apartments, non-taxpayers. And so, we're lucky, we're, we're in good shape. Thank you, Barb, Steve, thank you both for the work you did. I think we have a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Saffron.
Aye.
Mr. Campano.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mr. Sayers.
Yes, thank you, and, uh, actually I've already covered a couple of my items here during that...
Maybe still your thunder.
No, no, that's good, that's good stuff. But just three other items, um, first of all, just an update, um, Brad and Teresa are aware of this, but, uh, for the rest of the board, we are having our OFCC kickoff meeting this Friday morning, uh, at nine o'clock. Now that we have our architects selected, uh, we also have our construction managers selected, Icon, uh, is the firm that we will be working with. We will all be getting together, representatives from OFCC, uh, representatives from the school district, as well as representatives from, from Icon, our construction manager and our architect, to just begin to go over how this whole process is going to unfold here over the next 18 months. So certainly, we'll keep you posted as we move forward, uh, in that process, but it should be a very, very exciting meeting, uh, on Friday morning. Also, next step, and we talked a little bit about this last month, on April the 5th, we are going to have what we, uh, or what the architects refer to as an educational visioning exercise, actually right here in this space, uh, we're going to have about 25 to 30, um, people involved, we'll have staff involved, we'll have some administrators involved, we'll, you know, have representatives from the fire department, the police department, um, as well as some parents and community members. And again, the idea is to take a day and really start to brainstorm and, and to think about what we want this pre-K3 building to look like before we start, uh, getting into the design process. So this is the first step, uh, the initial step in, in the design process, so that, that should be a lot of fun, uh, that day as well, and that will keep you posted as we move forward.
And that was one of the, one of the, one, one significant reason why we chose GPD as an architect, is they knew they provide that service, and it's going to be interesting to see how that goes, but these, they, they really will tax you, tap into your brain and get you to really come out with some ideas, and they're going to take all this and then they're going to come back with some kind of a design, functional design, hopefully.
Absolutely, a lot of input throughout the process from staff, from community, and should, should be a lot of work, but it would be a lot of fun.
Remember Rodwell, who was here last meeting? He's the one that conducts that view, who was trying to buy an island.
And I just have one, uh, one final item, is, uh, is the board is aware, unfortunately, Willoughby Eastlake, uh, had a fire, uh, that, uh, essentially, as I understand, destroyed their board office and, uh, what it, what it has done for us is to start to think about and reflect our situation in terms of, you know, what would happen if we had a fire, you know, at, at the board office, and we are in a process of evaluating, we actually, Barb and I were talking today, uh, we do have some, uh, fireproof file cabinets, uh, in the board office, we have other files that are not, very important files, that are not in fireproof cabinets, um, so, so we're starting to look at, you know, what we have and maybe what we need to do. Of course, we have old financial records from years ago, old personnel records from years ago, we have special education files that we need to preserve, um, so with the board's permission, uh, one of the things that we would like to do here over these next several weeks is start to look at some digital, uh, maybe some digital backup, if you will, and, and maybe get some estimates and then come back, uh, at the April meeting with maybe some thoughts and order of recommendation. And we thought, obviously, this is an ideal time preparing for a move, uh, you know, into the new pre-K3 elementary building, but, uh, we, we have room for improvement, uh, in terms of, you know, how we secure our records, where we have backup, you know, a lot of the information is backed up, uh, you know, electronically through our computer systems, we have, you know, backups through, you know, Connect, our E site, uh, but there are some, some other things that we need to do to, to put ourselves in a better, uh, more secure position. And ironically, we met with the Oval last week for a semi-annual policy update and they actually have a policy, a sample policy on disaster recovery, you know, plans and procedures. So there's a good chance that we're going to be sharing those with our policy committee and perhaps have that for your approval as well, or for your consideration. But we are looking at this and reviewing it, you know, this, this situation and, you know, it's, uh, you know, obviously, I feel for Willoughby, Eastlake, what they must be going through, um, in terms of how do you move forward after something like that, but at the same time, moves us as a school district, we have to learn from that and make the adjustments that we need to make.
If we do it, if we do, start doing everything digitally, which I, I prefer we do, because I knew you with my company, but the benefit is, when you guys go to move in two years, you don't have all these damn cabinets and all these files, it's all electronic, it's all backed up, so whatever you, if something blew up, it didn't matter, you got it all saved, it's all there.
And, and the, the point is ironically, we're already doing it, for example, here at the high school, and I think we've been doing it for, I don't know, maybe eight, 10 years, something like that, where as our seniors graduate, we're taking those permanent record files and, and they're being scanned and, you know, backed up electronically and, you know, and obviously that saves a lot of space in terms of... So we're, we're, we're doing some things, but we, we just need to do it on a, on a more comprehensive level.
In fact, I may, uh, switching to Tyler Venus, everything we do in the system, it creates an image, so we are not printing anything any longer, so going forward, we will have no more files for January 1st on, it creates an image of everything we do, and as we scan our invoices to pay, we track.
We just got to go back to some point in time and bring it all forward now.
And, um, Steve's, uh, comment on that, uh, Mr. Mulder and Mark Costa have been working on a disaster recovery plan in-house for the technology, and was one of the things the auditors recommended on the audit, with a comment, and, uh, this has been kind of wide-ranging in the state of Ohio, they're recommending you have that. Not only, as Steve said, we have our, um, disaster recovery plan with our ITC site, which is Connect, but they're required also not only to back, back us up, but then they back all the school districts up geographically far away at another ITC site in case there's a disaster in our area. So they, they do this all over the state of Ohio between the ITC sites, so our, uh, our ITC site has a disaster recovery plan and Mark and Mike have just finished the one in-house and will see with the policy how all that fits and you, you will get it to approve.
I want to find people to see it too, now that we have to see them on board and they're in our, in our pocket, with their brains on the IT side, as if they've been exposed to another school, and examples of, of consultants, so to speak, and see if they are that often.
Any questions for Steve? Uh, wanted Mr. Mulder.
I have two quick items to share. Uh, one relating to last month where I talked about the, uh, our partnership with College Board Academy to adopt the SAT suite for our students and next year we'll begin testing students in freshman, sophomore and juniors. Uh, and on Thursday, I received a letter from Mark Giove, who we worked with for College Board, and just wanted to read it to you, it came to me, Sarah Rigdon and Principal Mike May. Um, he wrote, hello everyone, as I feel it's always best to pass along kind words, I just wanted to let you know that I mentioned at your parent presentation, I think Amherst is my favorite district to work with. My boss, the head of K-12 Midwest for College Board, just sent me a note that you were all applying to become an SAT national test site for the benefit of your students, and she made the comment that you maybe could be becoming her favorite district in Ohio as well. So we're well aware how engaged you've been in the digital administration trainings, and I guess I just wanted to recognize your professionalism and state again that you are being recognized as high flyers, well done. So I just wanted to share that with the board and, you know, a lot of that goes to, of course, the guidance staff here at high school, and specifically Sarah Rigdon, who's done a bulk of the work, so I just wanted to publicly thank her and her efforts as well. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, as you know, if you saw in the Chronicle Friday, uh, there was an article in the front page, a new kind of science course, talking about the new elective we have here at Steel, biomimicry. Um, just wanted to point out and let you know again, that it is, I believe, one of the only biomimicry elective courses in a public high school in Ohio, maybe even the nation. I have seen biomimicry courses at private schools or, uh, science schools, magnet schools, et cetera, community schools, but not at a public high school. A lot of science teachers are incorporating the concepts into their biology and chemistry courses, but certainly not an elective standalone course. So I'm, I'm proud and I think, uh, Steel's done a great job. Also wanted to publicly thank Angie DeLeone, who's going to be teaching the course, but also Rob and Jesse Glax, who have for two years been involved in the same trainings and professional development and being a part of the work with creating this biomimicry. And also, University of Akron, which is the hub of biomimicry in the entire world, they're the only university that has an actual biomimicry doctoral fellow program. So seeing that three years ago, that was the hub of biomimicry in that field of science in the whole world, again, we just thought, it's in our backyard and why not take a stab at becoming a leader in that area, in the educational field for our kids. So I just wanted to share that with you and, um, it was funny, after this was also in the paper, Carol Thaler from Greeley's Bio-Mimicry also emailed me and said, hey, look, this article was highlighted in the Google Biomimicry webpage, that, uh, they kind of picked it up and each blasted it up. So it was kind of a cool thing too, so I just wanted to share that with the board. Two great news items that I think we're all proud of, and again, it goes back to the staff and administration, the students and everyone's hard work and effort here to really keep pushing the envelope forward. Nice one, thank you everyone.
Any questions for Mike?
I have a question too. There's a lot of those classes that are, how many kids go into that type of class? It sounds like there's a lot of smart, big kids, and are we focusing any, I'm not saying we're not, but how much efforts are we focusing on the average kid or the kid that maybe be struggling to try to encourage them to take it to the next level as well? I'm sure we are, I just don't know how.
That's a good question. Actually, then this course is actually not for the, you know, the top, the top REX kids. We specifically wanted this course to be elective for students that are just interested in that field, um, and we, when we talked to a lot of other educators in the last year or so, they, they felt the same thing. This was, this is an elective, really, people are passionate about sustainability and, uh, being creative, and so we did not want it necessarily to be for top students. So we were looking to run one section next year for one semester for all 24 students and, um, some of those courses start off with making 12 students interested. Other courses like forensic science, you have like 50, 60 kids cut out of the blue and it's, it's a popular course. We had over 50 kids, uh, request the course, so we might be running three sections of it. So it's open to anyone who's a junior, senior, who's interested in this field, and we're pretty excited.
Are there other classes that other kids can get in that are on a upper scale?
I'd say that, um, you know, some of our courses, of course, have prerequisites of other courses, but, um, I think like forensic science, for example, does not have prerequisites, does it? I have to go back and take a, look, but a lot of the newer courses we have, our college credit plus courses also, there's no prerequisites, um, they're open to all students, so.
Thanks. Any else you'd like to do? Nice, Mike, you go.
Mr. Rigdon. Uh, sure. A JVS update, as you all are aware, or maybe weren't aware, that February was Career Tech Month and so, uh, we...
Career Tech Month. And so we held two Career Tech Saturday workshops, 25th to March, March 11th. Where over 170 students in the third, fourth, and fifth grade participated, where they got to explore, the elementary kids got to explore a whole different hands-on experience in various career tech programs that the JVS would be offering. We've also been sharing on every Tuesday, Tech Tuesday, throughout the last month, highlighting current students, past students, alumni, and staff, and stakeholders that utilize the students that attend the JVS, and showing the education that they have been receiving. There are currently 70 high school students throughout the JVS district that are on job placement or internships throughout the area. There's many new companies that have connected with the JVS, and several that are reoccurring for the students that attend there. We also are in the process of taking the sports, health, and fitness technology program that existed, and probably many of you didn't know, it existed at Clearview. It will actually be moving back to the campus of the JVS this next year. So we are in the process of recruiting anyone who is interested in pursuing a career in fitness, sports medicine, and therapy industries back on campus for next fall. From an adult ed standpoint, we hired last Thursday the new adult ed director, who will be taking over here at the beginning of the school year or in July. Kristen Smith, who was a culinary instructor for the JVS for many years, he had left. He worked for Community College for a little bit, and then gone out to Oklahoma, and has come back to the area to take this position as the adult ed director. So that will be happening. So I'm sure you'll see some new exciting things happening on the adult ed side of the JVS as well. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you have. Also, I believe the Amherst has eight students that will be inducted into the National Honor Society of, Technical Honor Society this week. And Amherst has the most students in, out of the 13 being inducted.
Any questions for Rex?
Thank you.
Any other administrative reports, Barb, any?
I just have one more thing about the foundation.
Yes.
I told you that the foundation, the educational foundation, will be having a fundraiser. That information, I think, was released today. It will be, actually be on April the 13th. It's a diamond to donate to cause, and it will be held at publichouse at Tony Amherst Coles. And it will be from 4 to 9.
Yeah. I don't recall off the top of my head whether you need the certificate, or you just have to tell them. But I'm sure it will be on social media, but...
Yes, I think it was just today we posted.
It's out there.
Yeah.
I knew it was coming, so I hadn't seen it yet. So do you know if they need the flyer or anything?
I don't remember, but it is attached, so they need it.
Okay, very good. So it's out there.
They have polls.
Yeah, they have polls on the 13th, from 4 to 9.
Thank you.
Okay. I have nothing else, President.
Sure.
For now.
The tree of skin already changes. He's like Colombo, you know. Any personal recommendations? Steve?
Yes, we have a number of items here. Item L I would like to consider separately, and I can speak to that here in just a few minutes. But before we get to that, I know the board has had an opportunity to look at and review the agenda items as presented there. They're fairly straightforward and self-explanatory. But wouldn't want to highlight. Item C is obviously the recommendation to approve Andrew Gibson, who you've already met as our new Amherst junior high school effective largest to first. But again, as I mentioned, I believe everything there is fairly straightforward and self-explanatory. And...
Before you ask that recommendation, I want to recommend L to say, it's item L, but only as related to the last two items. Don't vote it separately.
Yeah, or we can even pull L off altogether.
Okay.
And with your permission, we'd like to recommend approval of items 11A through 11R, with the exception of item L.
Motion by Mark. Is there a second? Rex, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Camden Carver.
Aye.
Mr. Yackavose.
Aye.
Item L, I just wanted to share with the board, this is a different kind of an item that relates to transfers. And I'm not sure how the board wants to handle this. Technically, we do not have, it's not required to be on board agenda and for your approval. And the reason why that's the case is the board has already approved a collective bargaining agreement with the Amherst Teachers Association that's already been approved. And within that collective bargaining agreement, the administrative team has the right to assign a transfer staff as needed. And so therefore, this item doesn't technically need to be approved. And again, it's at the board's pleasure as to whether you want to approve that or not. But I can say, all three individuals involved here have been notified of their new assignments for next year, and that has been fine with us.
So you're basically, you're saying, you're putting this on the agenda kind of as a informational piece for the board to know what's going on, even though it doesn't need to be ordered on. So, you know, I'm just thinking out in the future that you can make that part of your superintendent's reports going forward, that we are not required to vote on these kinds of transfers.
That's correct. We've included them in the past, just so the board is aware and is a communication piece, so that you're aware of who is going where. As you know, over the last five years, we've transferred a number of staff, be it secretaries, custodian, teachers, administrators, to different buildings and different assignments. And again, that, that is authorized through our various collective bargaining agreements. So again, this is, you know, if you would like me to submit these in the future, we can certainly, you know, do that. Or if you'd rather we communicate that through a separate superintendent's report, we can do that as well.
Are you saying that you just wanted to put it in his report?
Well, I'm just suggesting that's what we may want to consider in the future, to make it part of this superintendent's report, because this does not require board approval.
But we have approved them. We have approved them in the past.
That's correct. That was his way of letting us know what was going on.
Right. So I would, I would like to make the recommendation that we do approve these because they are on the agenda for this evening. So I would make the motion to approve item L.
That'll suck.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Sappa.
Aye.
Mr. Camden Carver.
Aye.
Mr. Yackavose.
Aye.
Okay. Educational recommendations?
Yes, a number of items here. We have our updated contract with the ESC for next year, the Health Department, various special ed contracts, as well as some overnight trips. Again, routine items for this time of year. We'd like to recommend approval of items 12A through 12L.
Is there a motion?
Someone...
Second, Bob. Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Camden Carver.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mr. Sappa.
Aye.
Mr. Yackavose.
Aye. Business recommendations?
And three items there. We'd like to recommend approval of items 13A through 13C.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Bob, Mark, discussion?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions on the studio, the pictures. Do we ever call out for, we do, often do we do that?
Yes. Mr. Mulder, can you speak to that? Was the last time?
It was the last time when we discussed with the principals about this time, they were called, they were accused of service, and accused of the, what do you call it? So they all, they all...
But don't we ever, like, look to see what other people offer, or are they in us, or whatever?
Yes, we did it the last...
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
These are first years.
What does, do they just work? Do we do it all by yourself or no?
We did.
We did, but we, okay, we did, okay.
We replaced that one.
Okay. And then the O'Blen Golf Club?
Yes.
That's for...
That's for a golf tournament.
Oh, that's kind of what I thought, but you say that specifically. Who's going golfing?
It's for a golf tournament.
I thought maybe Mike was going golfing.
And we kind of run and coordinate as a school district.
Okay. Gotcha.
Good place to have one. We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? If not, roll call.
Hey, Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Sappa.
Aye.
Mr. Camden Carver.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mr. Yackavose.
Aye.
Take a moment to adjourn to executive session, to, what, to discuss deployment of some compensation to public employees with no action to be taken afterwards.
Second.
Rex, one? Rex, one? Rex got your motion. Three seconds. Roll call.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Sappa.
Aye.
Mr. Camden Carver.
Aye.
Mr. Yackavose.